This special meeting of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 7:30 PM. I'm very pleased you've taken time to join us this evening. I'm sorry, 6:30 PM. I'm used to 7:30, I apologize. As the Judson Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals and policies and oversee the management of the district. We are responsible for approving budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and to listen to reports from the superintendent. Once again, I extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire school board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. We've established a quorum, and I will call roll. Ms. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Pichelle.
Present.
Mr. LaFOyle.
Present.
Ms. Canoyer.
Present.
I'm Melinda Salinas, and to my left, we have the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Carl Montoya.
Present.
We will move on to item 2A, Consider and Take Action Regarding Approving the 2018-2019 Instructional Calendar.
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Canoyer.
Second.
Second, Ms. Pichelle. Any discussion or questions? Okay. If there is no discussion, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. It's recommended that the Board of Trustees approve Option A as the instructional calendar for the 2018-19 school year, as presented. There's no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item 2B, Consider and Take Action Regarding Approving the Ranking of the Engineering Firms for Services Related to the Testing and Balancing Phase of the Construction of Escondido Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Pichelle, second, Ms. Canoyer. Discussion. Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Item number 3A, Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Preparation Discussion. Dr. Montoya.
Again, members of the Board, this is an ongoing process as we prepare for the budget for the upcoming school year for Judson ISD. There'll obviously be some further meetings, as well as in late June, the final vote for approval of the budget, but this is a kind of an update on where we're at, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Alizondo.
Thank you, Dr. Montoya. Board members, tonight, we're going to show you a brief PowerPoint presentation and discuss some of the areas in it, and it is just, as Dr. Montoya said, just a little update on where we are with the fiscal year 2019 development. We're still going to be meeting next month, in the month of May and June, to adopt the final budget, but I'm going to go through the presentation real quick. It's not a very long presentation, and we'll entertain questions as we're going through. So, the last time, the last few meetings that we've had, we've had, we're kind of following the same process, so that you can kind of be familiar with it. The last time you saw a slide like this, it had three, it had two other columns, and at the bottom, it showed different property value increases, where one of them was a zero value, zero percent, three percent, and a five percent. Well, in further discussions with the folks from the Barra County Appraisal District, it's determined that we are going to have a value increase that's approximately five percent, it's a little bit more, but what typically happens is they'll go out and approve, let's say, a six or seven percent value, and then they get a lot of protests, and then people will start filing their protest, and then the values come down, and some of them, even if they don't, are not successful in doing the protest right now, some of them will file litigation against the county appraisal district, and then as months go on, and as we're going into the year, then they'll set, they'll agree on some values, and then we'll lose value again. So, we use five percent, it's a conservative number based on what they're telling us it's going to be, but we also think it's a realistic number. It may be slightly, maybe we can go to five and a half percent, but not very much more than that. So, using that particular percent, that particular property value increase, and keeping in mind that we're opening two new elementary schools next year, one at the beginning of the year and one in the middle of the year, and we're also opening the senior or the final grade at Veterans Memorial High School, we, what we've done is we've taken what we are estimating to be the fund balance at the end of this current school year, which is about $43 million, and I want to just say something now, and I'll, it'll come up later at future meetings. I'm presenting it in this format for simplistic purposes, simplicity purposes, but we're going to play with these numbers a little bit, and I'll explain that as we do it later, because what's going to happen is some of the revenues that we're going to talk about in a minute, like the insurance proceeds, we're getting those during this school year. So, what's going to happen is the fund balance, instead of being 43 million, it's going to increase to that. So, I'm kind of including those numbers in the revenue for next year, but in reality, it's going to be a higher fund balance that we're going to be taking money from, but as we, like I said, as we progress through the meetings, I'm going to start at the next meeting already presenting it the other manner, and I'll explain it when I do that, and kind of itemizing, saying this is what, it would have been without the insurance, and this is what it is with insurance, so y'all can kind of keep track of what that is, because I don't want anybody to lose sight as to what our true deficit is that we're covering with fund balance. Okay? So, the only change that we have here on this particular slide is the, that we're doing the five percent value increase, there's no tax rate increase at all, we're just saying if everything went the same as we had this current year, we opened those two elementary schools, and one more at Veterans, we would end up with expenditures over revenue of about $10.9 million. In other words, we would have, if we adopted the budget just like that and didn't do anything, we would have to go to our fund balance for $10.9 million, which is something that I obviously do not recommend that we do, and which would mean that at the end of next school year, we would end up with a $32 million fund balance. I'm going to continue on to the next slide. So, we started looking at, okay, what kind of revenue opportunities are there for us to be able to help with this budget deficit? And we came a couple, across a couple of them, and they were not things that we had foreseen in the prior year, at least not this first bullet, when it's talking about the roofs that are included in the 2016 bond. So, what happened is that we asked the voters in May of 16 to authorize bonds to fix roofs on certain campuses, certain campuses and other facilities, and they approved those bonds. Then, about a month or two after that, we had a hailstorm, and so we claimed it with insurance company, and so the insurance, so our original plan was to use insurance money to fix those roofs and keep the bond money for other projects. Once we were finished with everything, come to the board and ask them if we could use it for something else. But because of the situation we're in, in the financial situation that we're in, I spoke to our bond counsel and said, hey, is it appropriate for us to go ahead and pay for those roofs with bond money, even though we got insurance proceeds for them, and use the insurance proceeds in the general operating fund for any purpose that we deem necessary? And he sent me an email, said, yes, you can definitely do that, as long as they're the same roofs that the voters approved, you're absolutely fine. So, when we went back and reviewed, how much money are we talking about that are covered, being covered by both funding sources? We identified, it's a little bit over $4 million, but again, because of the way that I am kind of being conservative, we are using a $4 million dollar value, and it's close to that, it's not very much more than that. The other one, the next line, it talks about excess insurance proceeds to be determined, this is the one that I mentioned that we're going to be in discussions with the insurance company for the remaining roofing projects, to see what they're going to offer us and what we're going to pay for those projects, and we're thinking that we'll pick up some funds there, I don't want to really put an amount out there yet. I'm hoping that we will have that amount before we adopt the budget. I'm not 100% sure that we will, but I have, I feel that we will, but I don't want to guarantee that we will, and so that will definitely help our situation as well. Now, the last bullet you see there, that's just there as a reminder, that was not included in that first slide where I showed you that, you know, we have that $10.9 million deficit or anything, that's just a reminder to tell you that there's the possibility of doing a tax ratification election, and the example that we picked was just five cents, just to give you an idea, that that would generate approximately $9 million for the school district in additional revenue from the state and local property taxpayers with a five percent property value increase. So, I just wanted to just kind of keep reminding you about that, just to kind of keep it in the back of your minds, I think that, from the previous meetings, the, kind of what I saw from the reactions from the board members, and of course, mine as well, is that we really don't want to go to the voters for a tax rate increase, but if it's something that the voter, that the board decides, yes, let's move forward with this, I just want to keep that number out there, so y'all can see about how much money it's going to be. Yes, ma'am?
I had a question pop into my head about a TRE. So, if we went up for a TRE, I know that one of the problems that we've had is when our tax revenues go up, the money we get from the state goes down. Is that part of that also, or would that be a continuing number that we could count on in years' future?
No, that's, that's, that's the same dynamic, except what happens is, these are getting into different, they call them different kinds of pennies, gold and pennies, copper pennies, you know, the different levels, but, so what happens is, once you reach a certain level, and we're reaching those levels with these pennies, they don't take as much back from you as you do when you're at a dollar four and below that. Once you start getting above that, you get to keep a little bit more, so that, but that $9 million represents both local and state revenue, and I could definitely give you a breakdown as to how much of it is local and how much of it is state, just not right this moment. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to move forward from here. The other thing I wanted to just make sure, and I know y'all know this, but just, I just feel better saying it, is that the things that we're doing right now, the things that we're going to be discussing, these are Band-Aids, okay? They're not permanent fixes to our problem, just as the state has been doing the same thing, fixing their, the way that they fund school districts with little Band-Aids by doing this a little bit here and that a little bit there, they've never really addressed the true issues with the way they fund school districts. That's kind of what we're doing here a little bit by using these insurance proceeds, you know, last year, we had that $4.4 million that we got, we were able to recuperate from that loan that we did to the bond projects for Veterans Memorial. This year, we're going to get $4 million again from some bonds because of the insurance proceeds, next year, or, you know, maybe a little bit more than $4 million when we're said and done, but I just want to be very clear that, once these things are gone, at some point, unless the legislature steps up next year and really does something meaningful and far, as far as increasing revenue to the school districts and the way they fund school districts, there will come a point in time where the only options are going to be, you ask the voters for a tax rate increase, or you cut expenditures, and so just know that that is, that may be a possibility for the 1920 school year if the legislature doesn't do anything significant next year during their legislative meetings. Definitely.
Okay. I think you already covered this, but I just want to make sure that I'm following you. So, the $4,000, the $4 million that's on the roofs is already included in the budget in, on this slide?
No, there's going to be another slide that's coming right after this.
Got it.
It's going to show you with all these changes, this is what it's going to look like.
And the $9 million is what we would have if we did a five cent increase plus the five percent property value increase that we're expecting from Barra County?
That is absolutely correct.
What is the increase in revenue based on just the five percent property increase? Is that on the next slide, too?
I don't have, let me think of it here.
But that's, but that's already figured in here?
It is figured in there, yes. I don't have it with me, I know I presented that, because when we were doing like the zero percent, the three percent, and the five percent, it kind of showed, I just don't remember the exact number that that was, but I can definitely tell you what it is.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure I was putting all the references together.
I'm sorry, I wish I could answer you right now. Okay, sure. So, this is the revenue part of it, okay? And the next part we're going to go to are the expense side of the budget, and again, all we're talking about is just the general operating fund. All right, so on the expenditure side, there's something that we've already put in place, and we kind of mentioned to the board a couple of months ago that, and it's the first bullet, that we're, any position that's currently vacant, that we felt like we could hire a temporary position maybe to cover it for the rest of the year, or that maybe we didn't need it for right now, or we could do without for a little bit, we have stopped hiring some of those positions, and the reason for that is to try to get that fund balance to get larger, so that when next year, when we have to hit it, it'll be able to handle a withdrawal from that fund balance without, you know, negatively impacting the district as much. It's still going to impact us, but it's not going to be as great. So, the next bullet on there talks about eliminating and or placing on hold identified positions, and we're going to talk about those positions here in just a moment, specifically which ones they are, and those are all positions. This is Option A, if you will. An Option A does not, is only vacant positions, it does not and will not affect anybody who is currently employed in the district, so that's all it is, if we currently have a vacancy right now, we've identified those positions and said, okay, these we can put on hold, and we're going to talk about which ones they are, or we're not going to hire them for next school year. Some of them already are not even hired for this school year, because they're part of that first bullet, saying we put a freeze on them already since this year.
Ms. Alizondo, sorry to interrupt, just so that we're on that topic. In terms of that $2.3 million that's holding right now, you're saying that most of those positions are unfilled right now?
That is correct.
Okay. I would like to see, Dr. Montoya, what that looks like, what's not being utilized now in terms of what we're going to suggest through attrition eliminating. There may be a differential there, because you're saying attrition as well, right? Are you just purely saying 2.3 is they're unfilled right now?
Well, I'm going to, right now, just 2.3 is just the unfilled right now.
Okay, so...
There will be some, the part with, the difficult part with attrition is that it's a guess, that we can definitely say, hey, we usually have X number of employees that leave the district, so we can count on that, but it's not a for sure. If the employees don't leave, and we know that a lot of the surrounding districts are not hiring either right now, because they're having the same situations, we may or may not have the same type of turnover that we typically have, so it's always hard, from my point of view, while we can definitely plan a little bit on that, I am more conservative and want to say, okay, these are definites, we can, we have control over these. These over here, not so much, but it will still help if these attrition, these other people leave and we decide not to hire them, we decide, okay, well, it's going to help our fund balance, it'll blow up, and during the year, we can give you reports and say, okay, we've had this other number of vacancies that have left, so we're adding this much more to the fund balance now, but at the very beginning to actually count on that as a definitive, it's just a little risky to do that, because you don't know how many people are going to leave for sure, but you know that some will leave.
So, just that I'm clear, I know I can always look back, but 2.3, 18 million is essentially unutilized positions right now, they're not, there is no one in place in those positions.
Correct, and we're going to go...
LSSPs, are they part of that, just out of curiosity?
We're going to identify everyone else's positions in just a moment, so you can see which ones they are.
Okay.
And, but, they're not, but we'll go through those in just a moment, so you can see which ones they are.
That's interesting. Okay, thank you.
You bet. So, and the last bullet on here, and I'm going to ask, in a moment, Dr. Fields, to kind of help with this a little bit, it's the change of set points on the HVAC, and we kind of talked about this a little bit, and that's just like at home, right? How cold do you keep the house, and at what times do you turn on the air conditioner, and what times do you not? And so, we've had, made some changes, well, we've had some changes over the years, and I'm going to let him speak to that a little bit, and then we'll come back and continue with this PowerPoint.
Yes, sir. I guess it was about two years ago, we had some concerns expressed from the custodians throughout the summer, that the temperatures were a little bit too hot for them to be able to operate. So, the mandate that was put on us was to increase the, or decrease, the set temperatures. Basically, our set temperatures during occupied times for schools used to range from 70 to 75. We later changed that from, to 74 to 69, going down one degree. So, that increased the bill. In addition, we used to cut off, I remember sitting in the principal's office, and at a certain time, you could hear the chillers cut off at the campuses, and you knew at that point, there was no more air conditioning coming, and what they do is they set the temperatures up to 85 degrees. If it gets over 85 degrees, then it'll kick on and start cooling off, but typically, when they say unoccupied, meaning the students have gone home, and most of the employees, they set it at 85 degrees. That time went from kicking off at the high school at about 5:30 and the elementaries at 4:30, to kicking off at 6 o'clock for elementaries and 7 o'clock for middle school and high schools. So, that's almost a two-hour increase in running 74, between 69 and 74 degrees at occupied temps, two hours past when school let out. So, what we're saying is that if we go back to what we used to do before, that would save, if it was just an hour, not two, that would save about $171,000 a year. If we were to cut back two hours, like we were before, that would save about $300,000 a year. Now, also in the summer, what Judson does that's different from nearing, nearby districts is that we run occupied temps the same during the summer as we do during the school year, which means that during the day, when the custodians are in there, they're, they clean at 69 to 74 degrees. The neighboring districts set their temps at 85 degrees during the summer, except for the areas that are being utilized or that have been asked to be turned back on, like the administrative area of the principals there. They also create a cooldown room, so they'll take one room on the campus and put it at about between 69 and 74 degrees, so if you get hot in the hallway, then you can go into this room immediately to cool down, because that room stays cool. But the set points throughout the summer are typically set at about 85 degrees. If we were to do that during the summer for those 45 days, then that would be a savings of about $500,000. And again, we would be mimicking what Northside, Northeast, San Antonio, everybody does in the surrounding area. So, if you were to couple both, you're in the $800,000 arena, but what Mr. Alizondo has done is what he usually does, is go conservative. If we say that we can do that, he knows that we can do 500. So, if we were to do the two hours plus the time changes in the summer, we could, we think that, we know that we could get to the $500,000 savings for the year. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
I was here in the days when we had little to no air conditioning in the summers, and I watched our custodians work.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's brutal.
Yes, ma'am.
Brutal. The other consideration is areas that have carpet, and when you're cleaning the carpets, and how long it takes the carpet to dry, when you don't have cooler temperatures circulating, removing the humidity and such that air conditioners do. I can tell you, I know teachers who have their doctors swear that they have mold allergies that kick in the minute they walk into a campus, and part of it is caused by that kind of operating, where we are not thoroughly drying, and that mold can build up, and so that's a concern for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, Ms. Pichelle?
I would like to know if there was a survey or consensus, or what the custodians have said about that? Have you talked, what did they say?
No, ma'am, we haven't surveyed the custodians on that. I can tell you that for the last few years, when we've had the set points the way they are, we've received little to no complaints about the temperature settings throughout the summer.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Fields, these facilities are being utilized during the day at some point for students, are...
Definitely. For Metzger and Veterans Memorial, throughout the summer, they're going to be hubs for summer programs, and again, even on the campuses where we don't have anything planned, if you, if the administration or someone on the campus schedules for the air conditioners to be turned on, that always happens, even if it's in the summertime, but we're saying as a norm, for those campuses that are going to have just minimal staff on them, or the custodians cleaning in the summer, that's what we used to do, that's what the surrounding districts do, and it could be a potential saving.
I don't think, and again, pardon my tardiness today, so I missed that first part of our meeting, but one of the requests that I've asked is that we look at days, and so if there's personnel that are in facilities, and we're examining the days of those professionals, we may find windows where there's no need to have anyone in a facility, and obviously we can shut down the entire facility for that time. It'll be interesting to know how many or what the percentage of our facilities are being used during the summer. One personal or ambition of mine is to have summer programs eventually in all of our campuses to some degree, that would make sense, so we obviously need to evaluate that , too, but certainly, if we see the recommendation from Mr. Alizondo, or if we don't, we'll obviously still examine it in some capacity, and then determine when are these professionals on campus utilizing the facility, and if it is a skeleton crew, can that skeleton crew be reduced, or can we put them somewhere else, or what that might look like if, and we can shut it down completely for weeks at a time potentially.
Yes, sir. The two responses that I'd have, and Mr. Alizondo can speak to it better than I can, but for hourly employees, if we were to take time off during a particular week in the summer, then I, it's my understanding that they would have to be deducted during that time. I don't think that it's something that you can aggregate over the year like you could for a salaried employee or exempt employee for an hourly employee, because if you're not working that week, then you can't be compensated for that week. And then the other thing is, is even when we do the, like Adventure Club, Boys and Girls Club, or what have you, if they're on that campus, then we would turn the, and we've done that in the past, we would turn the air conditioner on during that time. So, we wouldn't ask students who were on the campus during the middle of the summer to go to the 85-degree set points, but as Ms. Canoyer said, there's other people in there doing, you know, strenuous work as well.
Well, for the record, I wouldn't ask you to do that neither, not if there's any kids there, but certainly if it's custodial staff, or if it's just not being utilized for any other purpose, I mean, I don't know what administrators would be doing on campus, I'm sure getting ready for whatever they need to do, but clearly, we can examine that need and see if there's opportunities to maybe have those, those facilities closed for a certain time period to help, obviously.
Yes, sir.
What you're saying, Dr. Fields, is that everybody's more important than our custodians, because if you put it up to that high during the time, the daytime, and it's going to be 100 degrees outside, what's that going to push that to inside? That's not well insulated enough to keep that heat out.
I understand exactly what you're saying, Ms. LaFOyle, but I would say again, that the set temperature would be 85, so it's not going to go over 85 degrees, because the temperature's...
You mean the air goes on after it gets over 85?
Correct.
But 85 is really too hot to work in.
I agree that 85 is hot. I would also submit, and this is more of a Mr. Garcia question, but in the job description, it calls for the ability to work in extreme temperatures for that position, and I'm only being honest, and this is what's done in other districts. We're not asking to do anything, you know, that the surrounding districts aren't mimicking, or going back to what we used to do ourselves.
How would you like to work in that hot weather?
Again, Ms. LaFOyle, I understand what you're saying. I understand why we went to it before. What I'm saying is, here's an opportunity for a savings if we were to do what we had done before.
It's not worth it. In my book, it's not worth it, not worth putting those people through that kind of hell.
I'm here to follow whatever guidelines you guys get.
I know I wouldn't want to work in that kind of condition.
Understood.
And that's one of the things that, I mean, that's one of the reasons I'm going to step in here, Dr. Fields, if you don't mind. This wasn't Dr. Fields' idea, I don't want y'all to think that, right? So, I want to make sure that y'all understand that, we're just looking at items in our expenses and trying to determine, how can we propose some things that the board can consider, so that we can save some money? Because that $500,000 equates to us, you know, to nine teachers, or eight other employees, or, you know, 15 or 20 paraprofessional staffs. So, the idea is to try to save positions and people, and I agree 100% with you, I don't like working in the heat either, I mean, I feel bad for all those maintenance guys that are out there riding around their mowers and stuff, and the weather is, like you said, 90 something degrees, and it's kind of like, they don't have a conditioning period, they're out there in the hot sun. Exactly, exactly. And so, I understand, and I don't, I just want to make sure that nobody comes back and says, well, how come we're firing 20 people, or getting rid of 20 foot positions, you know, why didn't somebody else come up with another suggestion? Well, we're coming up with those suggestions, and then y'all can tell Dr. Montoya whether, hey, this is okay to do, or this is not okay to do, and if it's not, then we know that we're either going to go hit fund balance for another $500,000, or we're going to find other positions to get to that number.
You have these schools set up, and my right, that you can change temperature for rooms?
Yes, sir, definitely.
Well, the good thing is, if they're going to work in this wing, let that wing be. Work in this wing, let that one. Let them work around like that, instead of shutting it down.
We definitely did that, Ms. LaFOyle, prior to making this change about two years ago, for the same reason that Ms. Canoyer brought up. If we were going to shampoo or carpet, and we knew that the humidity had to be down in that area, then we would turn the AC on in that area in an attempt to get it to dry without, you know, having any mold. If we knew that they were... 85 set point, yes, sir. As a norm, that's what we're going to do, but...
I'm telling you, if you do that, I'm not going to vote for it. I will not vote for that. Put those custodians, who are low-paid in the first place, to hell. That is wrong, and you know it.
Again, you know, we're here to follow whatever lead you guys have.
And so, instead of getting upset, let's do this, okay? So, is there another thing where you would say, okay, you know what, if it was 82 degrees, I would be okay with that, or if it was 80 degrees, so that we can go back to Dr. Fields, and he can go back to his team and say, hey, run some numbers here, we set these at 85 percent set points, what if we set them at, you know, at 80, or at 82, or something a different one, where you would feel like, okay, that's still a comfortable temperature, that's something we can accept, and we can go back and work on some numbers and say, okay, this is what we think it'll come out to. We're just trying to get identifying the areas where we can all say, okay, we may We're just trying to get identifying the areas where we can all say, okay, we may not like it, but we can live with this. And what is that, we can live with?
You can live with it, but can the custodians live with it?
If I...
Would you like to work in that kind of temperature?
I do it all the time, sir. I cut grass outside all summer long when I'm there and I do it.
You're outside with the breeze blowing across and stuff like that.
And when I work inside homes that I work on, there is no air conditioning at all. And again, it's, I understand what you're saying.
When you're saying like this, I get a lot of...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So, so do you want us to take that off the table as a board's consensus? Do you want us to take...
No, leave it on the table and we'll vote it down, or I will vote no.
That's not what we're trying to accomplish.
The thing is, bring back something more concrete than trying to roast the custodians.
Sir, with all due respect, I'm not trying to roast anybody.
Well, that's what it looks like to me. And maybe it's not you, I know you're not that way. But the thing is, that's what exactly you're doing. You might as well put them in the oven.
I'm not trying to roast the custodians either.
No, it isn't.
We're good at every year.
I'm just putting it out there, I just, it was just a recommendation.
Ms. Canoyer. Thank you.
It's a poor recommendation.
I have a, I have a recommendation, and I don't know whether you've looked at it or not. I know that summer is a time where the custodians are doing even more physical labor than normal. Could we look at organizing teams to work in one school where we have that school cooled and the other school, you pull those custodians from, you know... So let's say these four custodian teams go and they work for two weeks cleaning this one school. Then they move to the next school and they, and the school where they're not working then is shut down, like that. Is that something that, I mean, I know we've got a little bit of time, we could work on doing something like that to, so that they're in a comfortable environment and we can move more quickly to get the schools cleaned and back in shape?
Yes, ma'am, definitely. We've talked about that as well. To consolidate teams and have them rotate around to different schools throughout the summer. But now the key is, is that we have to pace it to where we finish all of them in the right amount of time. And you have a bunch of custodians on the campus that aren't really familiar with it. And it really helps for the custodians that are familiar with that campus. They know, you know, all the creeks and everything, so they know how to get it done quickly. So we've talked to the custodians about that and they really like cleaning their own campuses, but we could talk about that as well.
Well, I think that maybe if you talk to them about having a higher set point or doing something like that, they may choose a different option. I think 85 is too high. I could be persuaded to look at about 80, I think. Making sure that we have cool rooms available. I know that they tend to adjust their schedules where they start earlier in the summers on those days to try to get most of that heavy labor done earlier in the mornings. And, but, I'm like, Mr. LaFoil, I saw when they had like almost no air conditioning. I mean, we'd turn it practically off and how hard they worked. And our custodians do a lot of work, they work really hard. And I think that it could adversely affect some of them.
Understood.
I'm not blaming you guys for all this stuff, believe me. I get very passionate about my custodians. I know how hard they work. I did that type of work at a second job. I put my first job in, I go to the second job. And that's what I did, and I know how you break onto a sweat, and that was up north, not down here.
Mr. Macias.
Is there an opportunity to just exclusively have custodial staff work at night? And I ask because obviously, temperatures are much lower at night, to potentially address this. I also just want to say, before you answer, that I do appreciate looking at every avenue for saving funds. I know ultimately, we'll be able to retain staff as a result of our reduction of expenditures. So we'll find a pathway that works so that we're not, that we're effective in every, it's a win-win scenario in every case. But to answer the question, could we, are we already at night? Is this 85-degree temperature already a result of being, working evenings and nights, or what does that look like?
We proposed that to the custodians and their preference was what we do. We bring them in early in the morning because that's typically the lowest temperature of the day.
How early?
Even if they come in at night. They usually come in at about 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the morning and then work until about 2:00 in the afternoon. And then they're done after that. So we try not to keep them until 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock at the heat high point of the day.
Have you thought about getting some more fans for it to both air around in there? I know hot air...
But we do have industrial fans at the campus as well. In addition, I'd like to remind of the cooldown room, in case it got too hot, that everybody's free to go into at any time. We don't want anyone to be in a situation where there's no relief in sight. So we would have a cooldown room at every campus. But again, we're willing to go back and examine whatever the board or Dr. Montoya recommends.
I would feel comfortable looking at those facilities that would qualify for that metric of having to have that temperature. And then again, examining that night shift option, if it needs to be earlier or later or anything, so that we can overcome this, just as a suggestion. But I did have a question for Mr. Elizondo in looking at this, and again, my tardiness, you may have addressed this. But one of the questions that I asked was in terms of using bus funding, our funds that we allocate in our M&amp;O for anything that could be infrastructure into a potential future bond as a short-range plan. Is that in any of these presentations, is this in the presentation?
No, it isn't, and let me explain why. When we prepare our budgets every year for the past, geez, 15 years for sure, we never include buses in this budget, original budget that we adopt. We always come to the board during the November, December timeframe and say, okay, this is what our fund balance looks like. We like to buy 10, 15 buses, we have the funds, can we go ahead and do it? And y'all typically say, yep, go ahead and do it. So it's not something that we can save out of here because it's never in these original numbers.
And I've noticed that through the years, that it's always an amendment, and it's always a sizable amendment that we're adding. So eventually, we can add it into the budget. But I understand the logic in terms of looking what we're doing. But the plan still would be that you don't come to us in November for a request for 1.3 million, that there is a calculated strategy to say, listen, community, we don't want to increase taxes. We, let's do a no-tax bond increase that can, it looks at infrastructure. And I don't even know if buses would be the only item that could fall into that. I would like to look at our maintenance and operation budget and see what falls under potential infrastructure or bond improvements that could be purchased. I think obviously, if we spend 1.3 in November, or if we pass a budget without it, we still have to potentially spend that money. So I would like to examine that as a short-range, five-year plan. Because again, it's not anything that we would do forever, but we, in the short run, could potentially save some money from our fund balance.
That's fine, Mr. Macias. We can, I can visit with Dr. Fields and we can talk to Transportation Department to see if there's a way that we can do that. I know that we're going to have an opportunity. A couple of things have happened. Because of the opening for Veterans Memorial High School, we were having to buy more buses to cover those routes because we were taking students from those same neighborhoods to Judson High School, and we were taking the same, you know, from the same neighborhoods to Veterans Memorial. So we had a number of buses that we were using for both. So we knew that after this year is over, the 12th graders now are all going to, you know, we're... The kids that are going to be going to veterans from those neighborhoods are only going to be going to veterans, not both schools. Then all those buses that we were using are going to be freed up now. So we were, we had a replacement cycle, and some of those older buses, we were not getting rid of because we needed new buses to cover all these routes. And then the board also authorized us to buy some buses for CTE programs, some other programs, special programs as well. So I think after this year, we'll be good on our fleet for trying to not have to do any buses for a year or two. But we'll definitely look at it, and if we can do a five-year short plan, we'll come and discuss with y'all so y'all can see kind of what...
Before you, before you leave, right? Because you're our expert on this, I want to get this brain knowledge that you have. And you did segue to my last point. And the other question I have is that we're talking about our budget and what's, it's anywhere between 10 and 15 million that our overture is right now in terms of expenditures? You'll get to that slide?
Originally, when we started, the part that you missed a little bit ago was when we were at $10.9 million in a deficit situation. And that's because we, we are using a 5% value increase in taxes, the property values for tax collections. So that's what brought it down to that number because it was a lot larger than that. And I'm going to take the opportunity while you're asking this, while Dr. Fields was speaking, the question that Ms. Rodriguez asked about how much the increase was only based on the 5% value increase and not a tax rate, it's $5 million in additional revenue.
Well, my specific question, why I wanted to reaffirm if that's had been asked, is along the lines of the 10.9. My impression is that it's that high because we're opening new schools. There's two elementary schools.
And the Raze last year.
And the Raze last year?
Yes.
So we're obviously not going to be, at this point, recommending a raise for this year. So what is the specific cost for those elementary schools?
I think we, I need to, I don't know the exact number right now, Mr. Macias, but I think it's like 1.2 million, and that's only because for each one, around that one, it was a little bit more than the other. And that's only because we're taking teachers from the current elementary schools and moving them with their students to the new elementary schools. If it wouldn't be for that, the costs would be more in the 2 to $3 million range, or even higher than that.
For each campus?
For each campus. But because we're, really, we're hiring the principal, just really the folks that you can't move, the principal, assistant principal, the nurses, the counselors, the librarians, those people that, you know, the custodians, right? All those folks that you can't, it's a lesser amount of money. So we can, not only can, we will bring to you a list of what it's going to be for each one of the schools, for the elementary schools as well as for Wetheram for the last year, not Wetheram, for Veterans Memorial for the last year. And knowing also that at, for Wetheram, we're only opening half of a year. But administrative staff, a lot of it, not all of it, will be hired, some, a bit upfront. We already have a principal, for instance. But they're going to be, like, we'll have two principals for a little while at Rolling Meadows for that half of a year because that principal is going to be going to Wetheram, is going to be managing her teachers that are going to be going as well with the students that are going to be going. So there will be a little bit of cost savings for doing that because it won't be for a full year, but not, because some staff won't be needed the entire year, that first year.
So if I'm conservative, then you're looking at 1.2 million per campus at a minimum. Is that correct?
That, yes, sir, that's the number that I quoted.
As a rough estimate?
And we'll get you the exact numbers here in the next meeting.
Our fund balance is designed to be utilized for one-time expenses. It's obviously not in, to be engaged in sustainable type of funding. So I would see right off the top, both of those campuses would fall under the criteria of having to utilize fund balance money. And obviously, we don't want to use a lot of it, but if we had to already look at that 10.9 and consider how much from the fund balance we would take, I would say comfortably that, since we know it's not going to be a reoccurring expense, would be potentially acceptable to help get to a balanced budget.
Sorry, I hate to say this, but somebody coughed when you said something. So what did you say about the reoccurring expense? You're saying it is a reoccurring expense?
It's not a reoccurring expense.
No, it is a reoccurring expense. Because all these are payroll costs that we're talking about.
Well, the reoccurring expenses, this is the first year we're opening the campus. I guess I'm looking at it in terms of expansion. And since we're opening a campus, it's an expansionary effort, this is, in my opinion, a need. But the other part of that is, we should see students on those campuses. And if we don't, then we have to go back and reconsider, why do we open the campus to begin with? So my thing is, I know you're very conservative with our estimates, and I appreciate that. But in reality, when we build these schools, they should be with new students to sort of increase our enrollment, to underwrite the whole rationale for having those campuses.
It happens, and what you're talking about does happen, but it takes time. So the first year or two that you open the schools, and maybe even the third year, you're not really having a lot of new students. They're the same students that you currently have at another elementary that you're moving to the new elementary. But because we're building these schools, especially the one like Escondido in the south, it's being built in a neighborhood that's being developed and growing, the first year or two, it'll be, you know, the same kids that we have now. And then all of a sudden, you'll start seeing more students, the third and fourth year especially, because the home, you know, the homes will be built, people start moving to the neighborhood because there is a new elementary in the neighborhood, and then those kids will come to our schools. That's just the way it works every single time we build a school. And then unfortunately, by the fifth or sixth or seventh year, you're over capacity at that school and you've got to build another school somewhere because now there's too many kids wanting to go to that school. But that is just the cycle that we see continuously happening. So the first year, and just by definition, because they are payroll costs, they are recurring expenditures. But you are right in that hopefully, after the third or fourth year, the purpose for building the school is that you knew there was growth coming. And then you are going to get some additional revenue to cover some of that. But it also now means additional expense because now you need more teachers to be able to address, to increase growth. So it's just, there's a nice balancing point, but it takes a while to get to there.
And I guess that's why I have the idea that it's expansionary, because I realize that. The first year or two, I think, as I'm recalling some of our earlier conversations, it was meant that it's going to have some growing pains. And as a result, that's why I feel it's not reoccurring. At some point, we will get to that line where we have enough students there. Anyway, thank you.
And I just wanted to, just by definition, just so that if you're speaking to somebody at a conference or something, that typically, when you're talking about any kind of payroll costs, they always consider that a reoccurring, a reoccurring expense. Because unless you're going to just have the position for one year and then get rid of it, but typically, it's a recurring cost, just so that you know.
It does make me wonder if we should open these campuses. And again, that's something that I've mentioned earlier too. If we don't have money, and we're 10.9 million, the reality of opening these campuses that are not going to be fully staffed, or not staffed, that's the wrong word, their enrollment will not be at a full capacity, does that mean we wait a year? And that way, we garner more students and more development happens? So that we don't have that one, two, three-year, hoping that students come, we know they're there. And I believe that when we do our bonds, we sell it on the premise that we need the space. If we don't have money, then we should probably examine the idea of opening these campuses or perhaps even delaying them.
And just to be, and that is some consideration that we can look at, is that when we open these campuses, and I did say the number, 1.2 million, what happens is, at the very beginning, what, like, I'll give you Wetheram Oaks, for example, we'll open the school, but we won't, perhaps, you know, we'll have a principal. But we may or may not have an assistant principal, depends on the number of students that are there the first year. So then we'll say, we may not need an AP the first year because there's only 200 kids there, or 300. So we'll, we'll kind of look at that and evaluate it. So although I said 1.2, it may be less than that, it just depends on how many students are we expecting the first year, second year? And we'll let it grow, just like we did with veterans. As the students come, then we'll start increasing more and more central, the teachers, you can't do without. I mean, 22 to 1, 20, whatever ratios, we're going to have to hire those. But other staff members, we kind of bring those in as the school grows as well. So we're not just having a bunch of people sitting around not having anything to do.
And again, and again, this is just me, having been through several districts and bonds, the public, whenever you advertise for a bond, it's almost like we promised to do the following within a reasonable time. So you have to be very careful that you meet that intent and deadlines because if not in the future, if you float a future bond issue, the public's going to say, well, you didn't do what you said here. You said you were going to open a school here, you didn't even open it, even if it was minimal numbers. And, you know, you just put it on hold, and so why should we believe you in the future? So all I'm saying to this board is just a caution because that could come back later very negatively.
And another comment, just real quick on something that was said earlier. There, the main reasons, I mean, yes, every time we open a school, it does hurt us a little bit to open it because it takes a little while to kind of get caught up, catch your breath a little bit. But the main reason that we're having issues in our district and districts all around the state is that we're losing enrollment. And y'all know where some of these kids are going. And that the funding, the way the funding is structured from the state is not helping us. They continue to take money away from us. And that is, those two are the main reasons, and the state funding be the primary reason, that we find ourselves in these situations as well as a lot of the districts in Bear County for sure, and across the state as well.
We're certainly in extraordinary times, and the nature of the environment now is different. So the models that we may have approached in building, they have to change. Which means if we tell our community, we're trying to save a district, that we don't want to be 10.9 million, it may behoove us to be responsible, say, one more year, based on the fact that all of these external factors are there. The commitment is to build a school, and the bond was passed for that. But I would be receptive. I'm not saying it's the best decision, we still have to obviously look at all of that. But I would be receptive to being, for being responsible with our funding, that maybe this is a course of action, based on the changing environment that we're in, that, you know, 10.9 is our negative. We want to ensure we provide services to all our children. We have to cut somewhere. And I would rather do that than, say, eliminate positions that are probably critical. Or perhaps, once we eliminate them, we burden other personnel with double the duty, and then they leave. And then we have this whole turnover situation where we're not getting quality of work. So it, we just have to look at it differently.
Sure, definitely. Okay, so I'm going to continue on to the next slide. So that number that I showed you, and I'm going to go up those slides just real quick here. Remember, this is what I said originally, this is what we started off with, no tax rate increase, just a 5% value increase to two new schools, we're at 10.9 million. Going through these revenue things that we talked about doing, we're getting some insurance money from here. Maybe there'll be some insurance money coming a little bit more, a little bit later. Then looking at these costs that we're going to be addressing, the, looking at in a minute, the $2.3 million in detail and that HVC set point. We added those numbers into the slide and said, okay, what will it look like now if we were to go forward with those things? So that 10.9 million came down to $4 million. And that is by adding, again, that $4 million insurance, by decreasing those vacant, you know, getting, not hiring those vacant positions for 2.3 million, looking at that set point, the $500,000. And we, and again, just reminding y'all... And we, and again, just reminding y'all that there's still an opportunity to get more insurance proceeds, and that may bring that $4 million number even lower than that. I just don't have that exact number yet, so I can't tell you. But to me, although I can't even believe I'm saying this, but I guess when we're starting from 13 million, going to four, I'm like, okay, that's palatable. I can do the $4 million, I just couldn't do the $13 million. And so what would happen here is our fund balance, at the end of next school year '19, would be about $39 million, based on this scenario. Again, it's the Band-Aid, we've got to do something more permanent, if the state doesn't step in and do something. So now we're going to go through these next slides, does anybody have any questions on this slide? Okay, we're going to go to these next slides. And here, I am going to get a little bit of help from Mr. Garcia, Dr. Fields, Dr. Kuntu, maybe, when we get to some of these, when we get to explain, when y'all have questions about what it is exactly that you're doing with some of these positions. So when we're looking at all these positions, again, just to restate it, these are all vacant positions. They're either through attrition, we're not talking about affecting anybody's employment status with the school district, that's currently employed in the district. So the very first slide, or the very first item on that slide, is talking about about a $660,000 savings. And that's by looking at the schedules at our middle schools and high school level, and all cumulatively saying, we're going to look at a reduction of six high school teachers, or clerical equivalents, if they have more professional staff, you know, or five middle, and five middle school teachers. So that'd be, again, you know, like, maybe one middle school teacher per middle school. And the, on the high schools, it depends, maybe three and three. We probably wouldn't touch veterans, because we're just growing them, so they would come, three from Judson High School and three from Veterans, excuse me, from Wagner High School. And Marco, do you have anything you want to add to that, or is that?
None so far.
Okay, so if y'all have questions and I can, I'm going to kind of let Marco answer. So the next item on there is Kitty Hawk, it's an assistant principal. And I don't know if y'all will recall, but they have, they have had one extra assistant principal that they came to request. And right now, that position, or there's a vacant assistant principal position at Kitty Hawk. And so that's one that we would say we didn't want to, we'd put on hold, we didn't want to hire right now. So that would be about $70,000. The seven elementary GT teachers, it's about $420,000. And I'm going to pass that on to, I don't know if Marco or Dr. Kuntu would like to explain that a little bit as to how that would work, so y'all could ask questions about that.
When we talk about the GT program, it's important that I provide a little bit of context as to what we have right now. So we have 18 elementary schools, and we have 18 GT teachers. So we started the conversation about ideas on what we could do to save money. One of the things that we looked at, we looked at every program and every department, but one of the things that we looked at is that in the GT program, a couple years ago, and I'm going to say it was 2011, 2011, there was a decision made where we paired up two campuses for one GT person. So we looked at that option, Mr. Heiner has done extensive work and has kept me informed of what that would look like. So what we would do is, we're saying, if we have 18 and we reduce to 11, and the reason we're saying 11 is we're already including the new campuses. And so we would also have staff, two staff members that would be considered instructional support for GT. So you would have 11 teachers, and obviously, we don't have 22 campuses. So we would have two teachers serving in that capacity. What that would mean is helping develop curriculum, help them support our GT program. Now, I know that the big question is the impact it may have on instruction. And one of the things that we looked at, obviously, there would be some impact, you know, I'm not going to sit here and say that there would not be any impact. And one of the things that we said, how can we do this? So we looked at the elementary campuses, and we looked at the number of GT students. And what we found is that, in some grade levels, we have less than five students that are GT. So what we could do is, we could cluster the GT students. So for example, instead of doing a pullout only for one grade level, we could cluster kindergarten and first grade, as an example. And in some cases, it would be, you know, where we do only one grade level, because the numbers of the GT students are a little higher. However, students would get, the service design for that would be once a week. Now, when you look at the comparison of what that means for the impact on, on the service design, so right now, we have, the students are getting a minimum of about five hours of services, and depending on the grade level, there's some differences. In the grade level pullouts, we provide one day, which is about five hours of service, for, in the grade second through fifth grade. We, half a day of services for Kinder, which is 90 minutes, and first grade gets three hours. So when we look at this reduction of staff, we would be having, the server design would change to at least, they would see the students once a week. I know that we're working also on curriculum design, and the curriculum will include enrichment activities for students at every campus. And one of the things that we're looking at is making sure that the students get the services that they need. There is no time requirement, that we must meet so many minutes, but it's important that, obviously, the more support that we give our GT students, just like we do with our needy students, our students that need remediation, it's very important that we address the GT students. I also want to state that one of the charges, when I came to the district, that Dr. Montoya made very clear, was making sure that we grew our GT program. There was underrepresentation in some areas, and so our enrollment has grown from the last two years that we've seen, that I've been here. It has grown, and we made some changes to the program, such as the screening process. It used to be recommendations from staff and parents, and now we did, we administer a universal screener, meaning that all first grade students and fourth grade students, we do a universal screener, so everybody gets tested. So with that changes, we also accept referrals in the other grade levels. And so when we look at that, that increased our numbers. So our numbers are growing, we expect them to continue to grow. We're tracking the populations, sub-populations, to make sure that all populations are represented. So this was a recommendation based on what has happened in the district before. Services can still be delivered, of course, you know, there is an impact, there's, the amount of time would reduce, but the state doesn't define the number of minutes. Don't get mad.
I'm not mad. I completely understand, and it's very, it's very difficult decisions we're talking about. I have to pull back on my years of service here in Judson ISD. I was a gifted and talented teacher at the elementary level in 2011, when we made those changes, and we went to servicing two campuses, and I did that for one year, servicing two campuses, and then left the position, because I couldn't support what happened. I went from, and I'm just giving my experiences, I went from being able to be full-time on a campus to be a support for those students across all subject areas and with all teachers. Some of our tag kids are some of our most fragile students. A lot of them don't feel they have an advocate at the school, and the tag teacher then can become that advocate for them. In fact, in many states, tag students are given an IEP and treated just like special ed students, because of the special needs that they have. I would love to see that happen, because this is something that I really believe in. It was incredibly difficult to be housed at two campuses, just for the, from the teacher's point of view. But it was also very difficult for the teachers that I worked with, and for the students I worked with, not to be there to do the clubs after school, that we, I couldn't continue with the chess club that I did. I couldn't continue to support the Spelling Bee, I couldn't continue to support the National Honors Society that I worked with, because I was torn between two campuses. The numbers of students went up much higher. At one campus, I had 36 fifth grade students. Because of that high number, and if you've ever dealt with a tag kid, they, you know, some of the teachers say, oh, you've got all the tag kids, it must be easy. No. The kid who is most likely your problem child is the one who's most likely to be tagged. So I couldn't deal with all them in one, together, so I had to break them up, so they got even less time. Combining, we did combine grade levels, I did K1 together. Those, those fifth grade students got about 90 minutes to make a schedule fit between two campuses. And in 90 minutes, there's not that much you can do for enrichment. The other issue then comes, we've already asked our elementary students to take, our elementary teachers to take on more students in terms of raising class size. For them to then step in and take over some of that differentiation that the tag coach, the tag teacher is able to help with when they're on the campus, is a burden on the teachers who are already now overburdened. When you add something to them, you should be taking something away from their plate, not keep piling it on, that, you know, they're going to drop that plate. Also, we talk about losing students. One of the reasons we lose students is when there's, the special needs for students are not provided for. And, you know, one day a week isn't enough for those tag kids. Cutting it down to half a day, three hours, 90 minutes, is even less, and I think we'll see even more students leaving the district. This is absolutely something that really strikes my heart, and I can't support this particular cut.
Of the campuses where this, this will be an impact, are any of those title campuses?
Yes, sir, it would include all 18 campuses. All campuses would be grouped in two, with one GT teacher.
And of course, I ask, because there may be title funding to potentially pay for it. You don't think so, Ms. Barra?
No, we can't, we can't use that money to supplant, that would be supplanting.
We couldn't use title money for what reason?
We cannot use money for a state mandated initiative. And for that one, because it is expected of the district to provide those services for our students, we cannot use title funds.
Well, then, can we supplement? Because at this point, if we're already going to, as Ms. Canoyer had mentioned, we're going to spread what we have left, can we supplement them, and I go back to the tutoring model, that's the only thing that comes to mind, and reinforce the work they're doing by adding supplemental support?
And I understand that Ms. Canoyer said it was for, you know, the GT students could also be considered at-risk, but they don't fall under the at-risk category that the state has provided for us to identify title students.
Okay, so we wouldn't be able to supplement it, then? Okay, well, we'll see where we are, I'm with Ms. Canoyer on this. We want to offer as many services as possible, and this is next to the 660,000, $660,000 expense, the most, the highest one, so we really have to take a look at that. Maybe it's something we can, we can split in half, Mr. Elizondo, instead of 420, it's 210 or something. But just something that might not be as impactful, because to also Mrs. Canoyer's point, if we position our current teachers to have to move forward without the support, how impactful are they going to be? And then, if they're not making an impact, then, then we, you know, we can't have that. We have to be efficient and impactful in what we do.
Okay, so I'm going to continue on. So the, the next position on here is a tax collector. As y'all know, we closed the tax office, so that position is leaving, I don't think anybody will have any issue with that. The, the next item on here is to redistribute the J-Care AP duties to the Director of People's Services. And so the idea here is that we would not hire an assistant principal for the Judson, for the J-Care Alternative School, you know, J-Care facility. And the Director of People's Services would house in that, well, they already house in that building, I think. Is he here? Yeah, they already house in that facility anyway. But they would assist with any issues at the Alternative School, assistant principal, and any duties they needed to, with the, instead of tying an AP there. See if we have questions? Can I keep going? Oh, sorry, yes, ma'am.
And the Director of People's Services would be housed. Oh, already?
Right.
Oh, you're already there?
Well, not, not him, not him.
We, we've had a discussion about combining his duties as an assistant principal, or working any issues, or... I'm housed there, too.
I was, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to get you, but I was asking, what's the difference between people services assistant?
So he's, he actually is a hearing officer.
He does hearings?
Yes, ma'am. He does elementary hearings and secondary hearings.
Okay, I'm going to continue on. The next line item there is to redistribute the adult ed duties to the JLA principal. A little bit of history, I think some of y'all know this, most of y'all probably know this, actually, on the board, that our adult ed coordinator at the time, or director, I forget what her title was at the time, actually is the one who came up with the idea of the JLA. So, and at one time, she was the one who, that position handled both of those. And so now, we're talking, and currently, they're separate positions. And so we're talking about combining those responsibilities again, where the JLA principal would also oversee the adult ed program and help with any kind of decisions that needed to be made in that program. And that would be about $55,000. So on this slide, originally, we thought it would be about $1.3 million. We may have to go back and revisit some of these, but...
I'm one voice, so I want to be sure that all my other board members express their opinions as well.
And I appreciate that, because at some point, I know that this is difficult for us, so I'm sure it's difficult for y'all as well. And at some point, we're just going to need, through Dr. Montoya, some direction as to, hey, yes, keep this on there or not, because if we get the sense that we're not going to get support, because we need the budget to be approved, bottom line at the end of the day. And if we feel like it's not going to get enough support to get it approved, then we're going to keep working on trying to identify more positions. And then what's ultimately going to happen, and this is going, again, to some comments that, and I was going to make this statement a little later, some comments that we heard through Dr. Montoya, and even at the meeting last time from board members, that we don't want to affect anybody who is currently employed in the district, we don't want to fire anybody, if you will. And so we've kind of stayed away from that at this point, but if we can identify other ways of reaching what we're trying to reach with the budget, either we're going to have to accept that we're going to have to hit fund balance with a larger number, or that we're going to have to make some decisions on some of these items that we don't want to do, and say, okay, well, that's going to have to work for this next year, and we'll see how it goes. And if it doesn't work, we'll have to come back and revisit it at the end of the year, and see if we need to do something a little different.
However, Mr. Elizondo, you did say that you're not finished bringing us more recommendations.
Correct.
So there still are yet, for us to see.
There's another slide we're going to go through here in a moment, and then, but yes, I mean, to continue, since we started this conversation already, I mean, there's another slide here we're going to go through. Again, these are the option A's, because again, like I said earlier, there are no one in these positions, and so we're not, nobody's losing their employment. The next option, which is what, I'm sorry, yes?
It's not true, but it's taxing.
No, they're vacant, those positions, well... How many?
They wouldn't lose their employment, they would just be reassigned.
Are there seven vacancies right now?
There's only one vacancy.
Okay, you're correct, you're correct.
Some other job other than elementary tag teacher.
You're correct, back to the classroom.
Ms. Rodriguez had a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So I had a couple of thoughts. I thought we were going to go through the whole slide and then ask questions, so I had a question about one of the earlier things. So first, at Kitty Hawk Middle School, they have an extra teacher because their enrollment is significantly, or an extra AP, because their enrollment is significantly larger than the other middle schools, correct? Yes, yes, okay. How many APs do they have?
They have four, right now.
They have four, so this would reduce it down to three?
To three, like all the other middle schools.
Okay. I was just...
But all the other middle schools, we were able to provide an academic dean through state compeds.
Ah, okay.
They don't have an academic dean.
Because they're not a title campus.
Right, and so we're, that's why we provided, or the board approved, an extra assistant principal.
Got it. So then, they would actually have fewer administrators than every other campus, middle school campus?
And it being the largest, middle school, yes.
Okay, that makes me a little nervous. And I agree with, with Ms. Canoyer about the GT teachers, that, that makes me a little nervous also. And, and I think in all of this, as I'm hearing all of these difficult decisions, the custodians, the GT teachers, like, all of these decisions, I think, like, what I'm not hearing is, like, have we gone to the people who would be impacted by these decisions and asked what their input is? And asked them to come up with, we have to save money somewhere, like, what would you do to save money? And I think oftentimes, the people who are closest to the ground on those kinds of things can come up with very creative solutions. And I don't know if we could incentivize that with, with, like, a cash grant or something. But like, if you can come up with an idea to save $10,000, we'll give you a $100 bonus, or something like that. a hundred dollar bonus, or something like that. I don't, I know places that have done that, but if we can't do that, I just feel like getting more buy-in from people who will be impacted by the decisions is something that would help me make the decision about what things to do and, and cut. Thank you.
I just have a comment. I think these are, these are difficult decisions, obviously, and thank you for the administration to bring, for bringing these recommendations. One thing that bothers me, and having been an elementary and secondary principal, elementary teachers, as Ms. Canoyer said, are already facing more students in the classroom, we have looked at some master schedules for junior high, middle school, and high school, and we did see that some teachers only have four kids in their classroom. And I know it was decided, we're not touching anything, we're not gonna do anything, but we could look at middle school teachers who don't have full loads for certain courses, and maybe they can be GT certified, and maybe they can help with some of the GT at the elementary school. I'm just, I don't know if we've looked at that, but it always seems like elementary's always the, the grade level, right, they're the ones that are always, it's easier to cut them, or it's easier to take from them, and we don't look at middle school and high school. It's just, that's the way the schedule works, and that's how it works, and yeah, for this period, we have to have five people in that classroom, five adults in that room. And that's not true. I mean, we can do things differently, but it is gonna take some out-of-the-box thinking, and it is gonna make some people uncomfortable. But I think maybe we can look at, versus reassigning six people, can we look at, we know how else can we share their, I mean, I don't know, there has to be something else that we can do, or there, there might be something else, I guess, that we can do. So, those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, and we will continue to work on this. I'm gonna go to the next slide. These are the paraprofessional auxiliary, kinda the same thing as we did a minute ago, the other ones were professional positions. So, there are seven bus drivers, and I think we talked a little bit about that in last time about create, the way that we're gonna transport, like, for instance, the CT students that now they're gonna be picked up at their home campus, home high school, instead of being, going through the neighborhood and picking up the students there, and bringing them to whatever, whether it's, you know, Jetson High School, or Veterans, or Wagner, as well as, there's some other, do you want to speak to it a little bit, Dr. Fields?
Yes, sir. Originally, when we started looking at this, in our effort to, again, not have to fire anybody, we looked at all of the positions that we had currently that were vacant, and we came up with thirteen bus driver positions. What we knew going forward is when we asked for the engines to be placed into those buses that were inoperable before, that prevented us, like Mr. Macias said earlier, from having to come back and ask the board to buy more buses. But what needs to go along with that next year, when we put them on the street, is drivers. So we knew that we needed six of those drivers, that we haven't had people employed in those positions for next year. But the fact that we're able to operate our routes now, without those drivers, not having, you know, a, a larger amount of sub-drivers on hand, we were thinking, well, we could go ahead and cut those seven positions. Keep the six positions to go for those buses, and then now, we could remove those seven. So that was another way to, to slim down without having to let anyone go.
Thank you, sir. The next item on here is a communication specialist, and this is in the public information office, that we would just leave that position unfilled for a little while to see how things worked out, and hopefully, they, we can make it work for a year. The next one is in attendance clerk, Mark Gundos, or, that is vacant, right?
Yes, that's vacant.
That's a thirty thousand dollar position, that's a district-wide position, it's a district-wide position. Then, the next position on here is a groundskeeper, again, thirty thousand dollars, that they felt like they could continue to operate without that individual. Then, there's an HVAC technician for thirty thousand dollars, and an electrician for thirty thousand dollars. And then the big-ticket item, there's twenty auxiliary positions that are on hold. Marco, do you wanna share which positions those are, please?
Currently, these are the positions that we've, we have on hold for seventeen, eighteen, that we decided we're, we're gonna hold off on the hiring. We would just continue to not hire those positions. There's actually more than twenty that we've got on hold, but an example of, of some of the positions that we would continue to hold under this proposal for the eighteen, nineteen year, would be three hall monitors, three ISS aides, two library clerks, one attendance aide, four instructional aides, and six bus monitors. So those are, those are positions that we have not filled, and the campuses and departments have, have made due for the last three, four months, or last couple of months.
Mr. Lefort.
How is that thing you started this year with the groundskeepers, hiring contract people? Is that saving us money?
Definitely, sir.
It is.
And the reason why this came up is because with the advent of Escondido, Wetherm Oaks, and even veterans, we, we were going to have to hire another grounds team to be able to effectively cut all these, these grounds. To hire another grounds team, as you can see here, it says thirty thousand, if you were to add in benefits, it may be a little bit more than that.
Oh, yeah.
If you were to create another grounds team at four, and that's thirty times four, then you'd have to buy another truck, another trailer to haul the equipment in, the scags, the weed eaters, and so on. All of this, and these were all recommendations from the departments that came back to me for recommendation, not me saying, can we do this, or can we do that? Even the set points. But I, I would say that when that came up, it was over two hundred thousand dollars. To contract out those same grounds for the entire year, came out to about ninety thousand. So, it's a huge savings in terms of, and it's not about letting anyone go, it's about just not hiring a new grounds team. In addition, in the wintertime, when the grass is dormant and not growing so much, we don't have to worry about, you know, maintaining the employees, and we don't have to worry about buying the equipment and maintaining all that as well.
That's a good savings, then, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
And nobody's losing their job.
Nobody loses their job. There was one grounds position that was vacant, so we just didn't hire in that position, but no one loses their job.
Let's dig some more stuff up like that.
Yes, sir, yes.
Ms. Pacheco.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Elizondo, I just have one last question. With the nine forty-five cost savings from the paraprofessional auxiliary, and the one point three vacancies that are, the professional, that brought the ten down to four?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez.
I don't have a question, per se, but I do appreciate, I know we poked a lot of holes today, but I can see very visible progress being made, and I appreciate that this was done without eliminating positions that have people sitting in those seats. Because I've seen what has happened in other districts in the last couple of weeks with the culture of fear that is pervading the county right now, and I, I hope, I, I appreciate that we're making every effort not to do that right now.
Mr. Macias.
I have a few points. One, the communication specialist, that's an unfilled position that we have in, in Mr. Linscombe's department?
Yes, sir.
Is that the differential between Marisa Pettis's being aboard and then not, because there was a difference in salary when we approved the change in leadership there? Is that reflective of that, or where's that?
No, it's, it's not included in that number, that's, that, there was some savings in that.
It was substantial, so, how much? I mean, where is it, I mean? It's forty, I imagine?
It was about twenty-five thousand dollars difference.
Twenty-five thousand?
Between, between the reclassification of that position to the person, to the other position, yes, sir.
So where would that show up at all this?
It's not in here right now.
That's twenty-five thousand dollar savings that, I mean, it's, okay. Yeah, yeah, so certainly, it's interesting to note where that might be, or, okay. And then, secondly, is this where we would potentially see next time the reduction in days? If we have that, I mean, that, I don't even know what that looks like.
Okay.
For me, I would like to know if cabinet went down by two days, if it, what, what, what would that look like, and where that would fall in this matrix?
Sure.
I mean, we don't want to impact salaries tremendously, but one or two days could be quite minimal, and really help our, our budget situation.
Okay, so, let me get a little bit of guidance, because we can, we can give you a lot of data on how many days to cut, and how much is gonna save. However, we need to know what groups of employees are you willing to affect? Because are we willing to affect all the custodians, reducing their days? Are we willing to affect all the maintenance employees, reducing their days? All the transportation employees, reducing their days?
I would, I would say, before you go through all of that, I mean, we want to minimize our impact to those that are not making substantial money. So there would have to be, in my opinion, a threshold, and it's just my opinion, but, you know, yeah, I don't know. I don't know where to start it, if it'd be sixty thousand and above, anything like that would be a start, I, I don't know, but clearly, no, I'd like to minimize our impact to custodial staff, and to maintenance, and so forth.
And that's what we struggle with, is like, okay, you know, where do we, who are we gonna include in this? Because when we did some numbers to just say, okay, what is, what do two days look like? If we didn't affect, I think there was no custodians, it was just, it didn't include maintenance, it was just salaried employees, if you will.
Well, salary, yes.
I think, I think it affected the auxiliary employees, the paraprofessional employees that work year-round. So for two days, we were talking about, here's, so this is what we did. We took employees who worked eleven and twelve, which is, that's not gonna be anything to you, but anybody who works more than two hundred and twenty days.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't include custodians, it doesn't include maintenance employees, but it does include all the staff that works in these two buildings, all the staff that work on campuses, that includes your principals, that work year-round, your secretaries at the campuses that work year-round, your bookkeepers at the campuses that work year-round, anybody who works more than two hundred and twenty days. For two, to, to take two days away from everybody, it would be a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Well, I, I imagine if you put it in here, we'll, we'll look it over and get the detail, and, but I, I do think that...
I don't want you to think we hadn't looked at it.
Yeah, I certainly wanna see it in here.
Sure.
I mean, I would like to have some real discussion on it, not that this isn't real, but certainly look at that in, in the grand scheme of everything. Obviously, minimal impact to students, I mean, that would be the other aspect to consider when we're, we're doing this.
Sure. And what we did, really, and I don't mean to cut you off, is, except for the seven GT teacher thing there, is that we tried to do kinda what y'all had asked, and that is try to, and I think you, you were one of the ones who said this, Ms. Macias, because of the morale of the employees, trying not to affect them, and we just felt like, for the number of people, and we'll give you that information, that are being affected to get to the hundred and ten thousand dollars, and we're talking about seventy, or eighty, or ninety employees, was it worth, you know, for having that many number of people walking around saying, gosh, I'd lost, you know, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, whatever the number may be individually for each one of them. So we can definitely bring it, not a problem, that's easy to do. We were just struggling with, okay, did they mean, like, everybody who works more than this, we're gonna cut them this number of days, or was it only certain groups of people? Because then it gets a little bit, again, it just, though, I know exactly what you're saying, you know, that we're always looking out for the folks that make the least amount of money, because those are the ones that will be the most impacted by this, but this is just a reality. It doesn't matter how much money you make, a lot of people live from paycheck to paycheck, based on that money that they make. And any kind of cut, regardless of they're a seventy thousand dollar employee, or they're a fifteen thousand dollar employee, if you take away four hundred dollars from the seventy thousand dollar employee, or if you take away a hundred dollars from the twenty, to fifteen, twenty thousand employee, it's a significant impact to them. And now, it just depends on where the board wants to go, and, like I said, we can generate the numbers, that's not a problem, we just need to know where.
Well, I appreciate you generating the numbers. One, we have to look at all aspects of things, and I will say that a few years ago, there was an increase in days in some of our areas. If we're not doing an evaluation on what we're getting for those increased days, those would be some of the individuals, I would think, did we get more? Are we getting more? And mind you, if it's about impact, which I use a lot, what are we seeing with those increased days? And so, I, again, we have to have that conversation to evaluate who we're looking at, who would fall into that pool, if you will, and then determine, and I do get morale, but I don't expect that many of our professionals, knowing our situation, they have the ability to be their leaders already, probably, in most cases, that this is leadership, and this is just something that's necessary for us to move forward. Again, we don't know how everyone will be on this, but I certainly would like to examine what that looks like with a minimal impact. I'm not saying ten days, I mean, but something that's, that's minimal. And, so anyway, thank you.
I guess what I wanna make sure we're cautious of, as a school board, is that, you know, term contract employees and changing their contract, and what that involves, and we need to make sure, are we talking about a program change? Because that's gonna require board approval, and if we do a program change to change somebody's contract, then that means we're not gonna hire those positions anymore, correct? Or do we, we don't qualify for financial exigency, so that's off the table, so it would have to be a program change for term contract employees. And so I just wanna make sure we use caution, when you're bringing that to us, like, make sure that we know all of those facts also. And then if I'm a principal at a high school, I know why I need my two hundred and twenty-six days. I mean, because it doesn't stop. I mean, you're planning in January already for August, and so what you're doing right now is getting ready for summer, and already starting for...
Registering.
Register, correct. I mean, so, I know it sounds like it's not a big deal, one or two days, but it really is a big deal. And you're right, a hundred and ten thousand for how many employees, did you say?
I don't wanna, I, it's probably seventy to eighty employees, or, I'd have to get you the exact numbers, but it's a lot of employees, it's not just a few employees.
And I think the ones that will be most upset are the ones that are gonna make less than thirty thousand dollars.
You're probably right.
Right. They're gonna be upset with any cut in their pay, because the insurance already went up, and we don't know if the insurance is gonna go up again. We, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Sure. And you know, and unfortunately, and I know, like I said, it's hard times, I get it, we all need to do our part, but I can tell you that there are a lot of employees in the district, especially these twelve-month employees, the ones that work year-round, that they're already working a lot more days than we're paying them for. And I just, and like I said, I know we'll all, we will all do our part, that's, there's no question about that. But just, please know that, that even though we're paying for two hundred and twenty-six days for some of these people, they're working two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty, two hundred, they're here when they're not supposed to be here, because they, there are just things to be done, and they're gonna get the job done, and has, and that's the same thing for teachers, we do the same, teachers are gonna work whatever.
They don't work in a hundred and eighty-seven, right?
No, they work more than that.
They work a lot more, and nights, and weekends.
Absolutely.
But I just wanna make sure that when you bring those numbers to the board, that we all understand what it means when we say, this is gonna require a program change. We need to, we need to know that as a board, because it will have impact, tremendous impact. Thank you.
And so as we, and I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Canoyer.
I've been thinking quite a bit over the last couple of weeks, I don't wanna come here and shoot down a lot of things without also giving suggestions for places that I think perhaps maybe we could look at. And so I jotted some notes. One area that I think we could possibly look at is RTI. Every campus has an RTI facilitator now, is that right? And yet, we still have two district RTI specialists. Could that perhaps be managed under curriculum instead?
The only thing with that is that that is paid out of title and state comped.
So it doesn't help us?
So it doesn't help. We've, we've looked into that also.
I know that when I was at district office, federal programs and grants was one person and a secretary, and I know that department has grown, and so that might, is that the same thing, title money, too?
We've cut it down to the same now, one person and...
I know that you pay a consultant quite a bit of money to help in, with curriculum, Dr. Arnell, that might be a place to look to cut.
That's from title funds as well.
All our campuses, I think, maybe have not been reevaluated at the elementary level with the new campuses opening and population numbers changing after we opened Copperfield, I know. Have we looked at where we granted extra PE aides? Some schools that have a receptionist that may not qualify for a receptionist any longer, making sure that we're looking at those numbers as well?
We, we did cut those already.
Have they already been cut? So masters won't have a receptionist next year?
No, that should have already been cut, because it, by the numbers, they didn't qualify for the numbers.
Actually, to, to add on to that, Ms. Canoyer, we're doing that via attrition.
Okay.
Because we don't want people to lose their employment, but as they resign, we're letting them know, you're not, you don't have more than eight hundred students, therefore, we're not gonna rehire the receptionists. So we did that for approximately three campuses last year, and continue to do so, because we don't wanna just eliminate positions.
Just trying to make, put in many minds... Just trying to make, put many minds at work, because some things you think of, I may not think of, and vice versa. And I do want to say that this is very difficult, and I don't want anyone to feel like the board is attacking them for suggestions they're bringing. It's just very delicate. I know a lot of us have a lot of history here in the, in the district. We want to see it do well, we don't want to see a huge deficit. But when we're talking about people's livelihoods, it's a very difficult situation.
Macias and then Mr. LaFOyle. Mr. Macias.
I want to apologize if I got a little hard on you gentlemen, but this is a passion with me. This is my thirteenth budget. And, you know, it gets harder every year. The money ain't there, they aren't giving us to us, we got to do something. But I'm sorry if I got too hard on you.
Absolutely fine, that's what, we need the feedback, so we know which way to go, that's absolutely fine. As long as it's always professional, we'll take it.
Mr. Macias.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Salinas. I'm still very anxious to see what the internal audit does in August. I'm back to efficiency, and so evaluating what our professionals are doing. I, I know that's one aspect of what we requested from the internal audit. We want to ensure that we aren't overburdening employees. I, I heard a lot of our employees work much harder. That might be another reason why we're not retaining them. And so when I go back to the retention issue, the whole premise behind this internal audit, we need to find out where, what we're doing. Because it costs money to train new professionals, and we just got to stop that. I have a goal one day to see probably a competitive turnover rate that's far lower than most of Bear County. But that's what we're striving towards. So that will help us, I believe, I believe it will. And then I guess what is our current metric, or strategy, I should say, I'm sorry, for evaluating efficiency? In terms of, not an employee evaluation, I understand that part, but how we ensure we're getting our dollars worth out of a position? How are we evaluating that now?
Right now, we've taken the TASB recommendations that they've given us over the last three studies and gone by those recommendations. One of the things that Gibson, the consulting group, is going to look at, Mr. Macias, is precisely that very thing. They're going to analyze all of our two hundred and twenty-six day positions, all our two hundred and twenty positions, and see where, where we could be more efficient or any, any position above two hundred and twenty days. And so the other thing that they're going to do is their survey is going to be quite comprehensive, and that'll be distributed to employees approximately May twenty-first. But to answer your, your question a little more directly, we've just followed the lead from TASB at this point, who makes their recommendations based on their studies.
One thing that I'll tell you about TASB that always concerns me, we hear from them every year, their recommendation for equalization and salary increases. They make the recommendation, and they make that same recommendation based on size of district across the state. But what, what I've seen is, a lot of times, is that they're asking everyone to increase by two percent or three percent. So basically, from a strategic advantage, we're just keeping up or trying to keep up. I think our perspective needs to be to be competitive. And if it means breaking from that recommendation to get competitive advantage, that's what we need to be looking at. Because TASB is always going to recommend, yeah, increase your salaries, and that's important here, but it's always universal. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'd like to know what our localized strategy will be to work on retention. And that's why last budget cycle, when we were talking about raises, we're looking at giving increases to those positions that we know we see higher turnovers, year five, six, seven. We want to keep them in the classroom, so we can deviate. I know that TASB did recommend, which is strong, but it recommended it to everyone. So we, we just need to, I don't know what to do, but make it ours and build that competitive advantage, so that we're not losing employees or teachers.
I just have one last thing, make sure, and when you, when we come back, if we could also look at cutting the board's budget. Maybe from thirty-five to twenty-eight, or I don't know, you, you all can give us some suggestions.
We'll be happy to, ma'am.
Well, it's only, it's the right thing to do.
If we're asking to cut, then we should be willing to take a cut too.
We'll tell you what your amounts are, and y'all can tell us what y'all like us to do.
I was going to say, and you know, we're, we're in the process of looking at a superintendent, and certainly the salary that we're considering, we can also, I mean, look at that. We have some leeway there. I know you all don't know that, but, but that could be a potential savings, maybe, maybe not.
Okay, so I have, I need some direction, not necessarily tonight, y'all can definitely do this through Dr. Montoya, so he can tell me what my next marching orders are. You know, we talked a little bit tonight that this is option A, we're trying not to affect people. We have started on a list for option B, and that is where we're actually going to affect people's positions. That we're going to either say that they need to be reassigned, which some of these things the board doesn't necessarily get involved with. It's Dr. Montoya's prerogative to reassign people, and he can do that. And, and in doing that, he can eliminate a current position, but similarly to the GT teachers, reassigning that individual to a different position. So there's that option. There's also the option where we just eliminate positions and say, you know, we're eliminating it, we don't really have another job for you currently. You can look to see what's available and apply for other positions, and we'll give you some priority. In doing either one of those two, the respectful thing that we always try to do is have a conversation with the employee before we bring it to the board. Because the last thing we want to do is to discuss a position, and the employee says, hey, they're cutting my job and they didn't even tell me. So before we do that and have those difficult conversations with the employees and make them get concerned, we, we really need to sense a direction as to, okay, does the board want us to go there? Do they want us to start looking at truly cutting positions that we have right now where their people are sitting in those positions? Knowing that some of them may not be employed in the district in the future, and we just need some direction. We can do that, we've done it before in years past. I don't know necessarily that it's necessary for this year, but I'm going to say it real, just like I said earlier. What we're doing right now is a Band-Aid. If we do not, if the state doesn't come through to do some significant funding changes for the nineteen, twenty school year, whoever's in my chair and whoever's in y'all's chairs are going to be dealing with some really, this is hard, but it's not going to be anything compared to what's going to happen then. Because we have been cutting positions, so many of them, through the different student-teacher ratios, through the things we just talked about. That you're going to get to a point where there's nowhere to cut. And it's just going to be a matter, again, about going to the voters and asking for more tax increases. And whether the voters decide to do that or not, it's going to be obviously their, their choice. But we just need some direction for this year, for this year's budget. If you want us to look at some of those other things we're talking about, because I know y'all are saying, okay, y'all are still working on the list. We, we are, and we have some things that we've identified, but these are going to affect people here that are working for us currently. And so we just need to know, and like I said, please have a conversation with Dr. Montoya, feel free to tell us now, it's up to y'all. What do y'all want us to do? Because we can do it, we just need to know, is that what y'all would like for us to do?
Mr. Macias.
Thank you, I did have a lot of points, so I just found two more points I wanted to address real quick. One, and this is important, Mr. LaFOyle, this is important. The auxiliary positions, you mentioned hall monitors as being some that are being, so what is the, the safety concerns or issues? I ask that just simply because are we seeing an increase in, in student discipline or in any aspect of potentially employee safety as a result of not having hall monitors at these facilities?
I don't know the answer to that question, sir, but I, all I can tell you is that the principals at those campuses did not feel an overwhelming need to fill those positions. They were vacant for quite some time, which leads us in HR to believe that they were, they felt like the conditions were okay without those hall monitors and therefore could continue. I would, I would speak to my experiences as an administrator and say typically around this time of year, you know, things get a little more active with the students. There are certain peak times of the year, and this is certainly one of them.
I would like to see some trends, two, three years, those campuses specifically, in terms of any issues that may have arisen. There are ways that we're trying to document how many students are going into, in-school suspension or who have to go to the office. Those things will, will, I guess, give me a better understanding of where the, the campuses are. I do think that hall monitors do play a crucial role, we don't pay them a lot, so, I don't know, just a thought. And then the other part, I know that for the last couple of years, we've spent a significant amount of money on legal fees. Those legal fees represent a significant amount of money. I, I think a lot of it, when I saw the last series of invoices from Walsh, are related to grievances. And they're, they're, I mean, I'm not going to say it's unacceptable, people have the right to grieve, but somewhere, we're, we're allowing them to continue and, and we're being charged. And the, and the rate's crazy, I mean, it's in the hundreds of dollars per hour when we're dealing with legal, with a law firm. So I believe that our expenditures are probably well exceeded. If we save two hundred thousand dollars in legal fields, fees, look at what you're presenting here in terms of what to not fill. We could, we could put hall monitors in it, two hundred thousand, two fifty, or whatever it is, how much do we have budgeted, Mr. Elizondo, in, in legal services?
I'm sorry, we started off, I think, with three hundred and fifty thousand, two fifty or three fifty, and now we're probably up to six, seven hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that is significant in terms of all of this. And so obviously, Dr. Montoya, you'll have to also give some assessment as to why we're there. But it looks like, just a review of it, is that we're spending a lot of money, and a lot of it looks like it's related to grievances. So I guess if, if I had an understanding of, if that is where our funding is going, but that would be significant if we could say next year, we're not going to spend seven hundred thousand dollars on, on legal services and have a plan for that.
Anyone else?
I, I, I don't feel like I'm in a position to say that this is, you know, we want you to look at. Get, yeah, termination. I'm not in a position to say that, but I would much rather that you, Mr. Elizondo, bring the recommendations to us rather than the other way around. If there's whatever departments and, and, you know, that you feel just like you already have done, to let us know where the belt can be cinched. Because the fact of the matter is, the belt has to be cinched. And we don't want it to affect anyone's livelihood. We don't. But if, wherever it can be cinched, just like you said, not filling these positions, that's a good start, that really is. Thank you for the work that you've done, but I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be able to give you any suggestions, I'm going to wait to see what you're going to recommend to us.
And thank you for that, and I just make, want to make sure that I was clear, I really wasn't asking for you all to give me positions that y'all thought, just whether or not you all wanted us to proceed. And, and I appreciate you saying thank you, and it is a team, I mean, the entire cabinet has been working on this, and we've gotten into some really heated discussions about this. But we, I just need a sense from the board, and really, again, if, really, Dr. Montoya needs it, so he can tell us. Do you want us to look at positions that are currently being held by employees? And if you say yes, if, if they say yes, then we'll start looking at, okay, how can we do things differently, just like we did for the GT program? Is there some other kind of way that we can handle something that we're currently doing, so we can change the way we're doing it? And again, it doesn't mean necessarily that the person's not going to have a job with the district, they're just not going to have the same job they have right now. And if the board tells Dr. Montoya, you know what, that's okay, as long as they're going to have a job with the district, then we're okay with you looking at that, then we can look at some of those. But if you're thinking, if your thought process is, no, we definitely don't want you messing with anybody's employment, we want them doing the same thing they're doing next year that they're doing now, then we just need to know that as well. So we know what things are going to be palatable, because like I said, before we come to the board, we're going to go to that employee, and we're going to make them aware that we're going to be discussing their position with the board and to make a change. And we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page before that happens.
I agree with, with Ms. Pichon, thank you to everyone who's worked on budget. We know it's very difficult, and you know, I read every time we have a meeting, we're not here to make administrative or management decisions pertaining to the daily operations of the district, that's the responsibility of the superintendent. We have four positions open right now for principal. If he comes next week and says, I'm going to reassign these people, I'm going to support Dr. Montoya's decision. That is not my job to tell him what to do. His job is to tell us. And then we decide, are we going to support that decision or not? So if he chooses to reassign four people and make them the principals and not hire and eliminate four positions currently, that's up to him. But I do not want to see anyone lose their job. I don't, I don't want that. So I don't need to see Plan B or C or whatever letters you, you said earlier. But, but if Dr. Montoya wants to reassign some people, absolutely, that is his decision and that is his duty.
Okay, based on the number of heads that I'm seeing nodding up there, I think that that gives us exactly what we needed to know. Thank you.
Dr. Salinas.
Yes, sir.
I, I concur, trying to carefully, carefully word my, choose my words here. The reality is that you and administration do come to the board for some guidance, because naturally, you do not want to make a recommendation that doesn't have any board input, because then all of a sudden, we don't like your idea. And in a true team environment, this back and forth dialogue, I think, is extremely important. So I'll differ from my colleagues in terms of your approach to addressing us. That way, we have an idea, you get an idea too, where we're comfortable with, and we work through the issues together. I don't want to ever have a paradigm where administration isn't having conversations with the board, that's just part of a team. Now, naturally, you guys are the experts, we come, we provide the oversight and provide our opinion, but that two-way dialogue is critically important, and I appreciate that we have these discussions, so that we can give you some sort of guidance. And that way, when you're, next meeting, giving us this information, we, we've worked as a team in terms of trying to get to that next step. And, you know, the reality is, you know, and I'll, I'll be very candid, we'll, we'll call this guy over here, the superintendent, if we're unhappy with something, and he'll hear it. It's just the reality of how this dynamic works. So it'd be nice if he was completely autonomous, but let's be real, we'll always be talking about decisions, just because we want to understand them and where they came from. Because we hear it from our community, and our community wants to know, why are these decisions being made when they call us? But again, this was a great start. I would just want some affirmation that we won't be seeking any funding for buses, based on what Dr. Fields had mentioned. Because one point three, or whatever it is we ask every year in November, that's a sizable amount. And so, anyway, I think it's been, been good, thank you.
And I think Ms. Rodriguez has final words.
I don't know if I would say it's the final word, but I, I was going to speak up when Dr. Salinas mentioned about the board budget. I'd be, I don't know if you asked, it seemed like you were asking for a range. I'd be very comfortable with two to three thousand dollars reduction in what we currently receive. And I also wanted to say to Ms. Betty Holmes, our board secretary, that happy Secretary's Day today, and we hope that you had a good day.
And just one final comment, and it has nothing to do with, I mean, just about meetings. So in the budget calendar, I had, that we, the tentative one that we put out, you know, back several months ago, we recall, we had scheduled two meetings for the month of May, one on May the tenth and one on May the thirtieth. Based on the discussion that we had tonight, I don't really think we're going to have sufficient information for a May tenth meeting to continue. So if it's acceptable to the board, and please discuss, you know, with Dr. Montoya, otherwise, then we are going to just have, we will not have the May tenth meeting, but we will have the May thirtieth meeting. Because by then, we should have more information on where a lot, a lot of things, budgets back from departments and campuses, to where we can have more present.
So as of tonight, we are officially canceling May tenth, and we'll continue to have the, the May thirtieth.
If that's acceptable to the board, and that's, yeah, and to my boss, then yes.
Mr. Macias is asking for a program review on May the tenth.
We, we haven't had a program review, and that's still something I think that's important for us to look into, different aspects of the budget. The detail is, I mean, anything that has to do with money, I mean, we should be taking some, some.
I'll tell you, Mr. Macias, that while, you know, we can definitely present some programs, by the tenth is not sufficient time for the people to prepare for that date. So if there are some areas, you definitely please share with Dr. Montoya, we can try to fit in a different date to be able to get the information to y'all and have a meeting if we all like, so we can present it. But it's just not enough time to have everybody go out right now and do this, especially because a lot of the areas that you probably would be interested in would be in the curriculum or instructional area. And with all the testing that's going on, that's where their focus is right now.
But wouldn't they present a budget to you? And if they present a budget. And if they present a budget to you, it's because they've evaluated the programs. And so, I don't think it'd be as complicated. I mean, I'll respect the fact that there may be some other things, but we've done program reviews earlier. I, I don't know how this one escaped us, but...
Well, we had a discussion about it. I don't want to make sure it escaped us. We had a discussion about it at the last meeting.
And I, I wanted a program review.
And I asked, and you made, and you did make a comment, and I remember you said that. And you said, "And if we don't have a program review, then what I will do is I will, what, what you said was, and if we don't have a program review, what I will do is get together with Dr. Montoya and maybe speak individually to those individuals?" Did I have questions about those particular programs?
Well, when you...
It's up to y'all. I'm just saying, that's what happened last...
But when you say here that there, it's not a good time, and not sufficient, I don't want to go to people's departments and say, "Hey, let's talk program review individually." It really is more beneficial to have a, a board come together and have this discussion. And since it's been a practice for every year I've been on the board, I don't want this to be the first year, we don't have a program review, because two board members don't want to have one. I mean, I really believe that we always need to have a practice of having a program review. We have new board members. I mean, I just don't know where we got off on this.
To me, I'm saying is that on March 27th, when we met, this meeting tonight was supposed to be on our calendar, it was a program review. And I asked, and that meeting...
I expected a program review.
And said, "Hey, are we going to do that?" And I was told, you know, it seemed like, no, we're not going to do it.
But who, who told you?
I said that because we had a conversation here, and there were several...
I didn't think we took a vote.
And that, no, we did not take a vote.
So, so...
Because it was not a voting item.
Exactly.
However, we did talk about that we could have a program review, and anyone who wanted to come could come for the program review.
But it's not here. Where's the program review?
I understand, because we did not schedule it for today.
It was on the calendar.
Okay. If we would like a program review, we can call, call Ms. Holmes and anyone who would like to attend, like Mr. Elizondo just said, we can have a program review. Yes, sir.
You can send in by telephone, yes.
Okay.